Order the March fourth, two thousand and twenty-five meeting of Laconia Planning Board. Savannah, would you take roll call?
In attendance tonight, we have Brian Wolf, Dave Ulette, Councilor Bruce Chaney, Vice Chair Rich McNeil, Amy Lavesik, Planning Director Rob Mora, Assistant Planner Tyler Carmichael, and I'm recording secretary.
Yes, and Savannah is our recording secretary tonight, and the other staff in attendance is Rob Mora, Planning Director, and Tyler Carmichael, Assistant Planning Director. Are there any corrections to the minutes? No corrections, so I'll look for a motion to accept the minutes as presented.
So made.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, our first agenda item is Agenda PB two zero two five dash zero three two Parade Road. It is a two lot subdivision and a boundary line adjustment. Is this application complete?
Yes.
And ready for acceptance?
Um, hold on, what, um, on that, um, we do have a waiver for sidewalk, so before we...
At first?
Yeah.
Okay, alright. So, I guess I'll open it up for discussion of the sidewalk waiver? This, I believe this is on Parade Road, it's in a very rural area, there are no sidewalks within significant distance. So, any discussion?
Is money gonna be placed in a fund in waiver of sidewalks?
I don't believe we have any mechanism to do that yet. Hopefully with the new impact fees, that will be solved.
I thought we had money for sidewalks for that project up on Providence Street.
Hmm, so...
I don't know off the top of my head on that one.
Yeah, it could have been to where an escrow account may have been created for that specific area, but you can't just take money and, and then use it somewhere else.
On that, on that same token, though, that is in our, our R one and R two corridor that we specifically created to preserve the natural character of those roads and preserve, the rock walls and, and the farmland that is out there.
That scenic byway.
Scenic byway aspect of it. I, I don't think it would be in the, uh, in line with the master plan to put a sidewalk out in, in one of those.
I understand no sidewalks needed, but I thought we had a fund set up in waiver of sidewalks.
So, you could take the required money and put it into escrow for the sidewalks at that specific lot, but it can't be used anywhere else in the city. So then you'd have an escrow account for that lot held indefinitely for a, a street until they decide to put sidewalks in.
I think that hopefully will be solved when we redo the impact fees.
And that, that's one of the objectives that's in the side, in the, in the impact fee study of, is a better way of managing the sidewalks.
So then I guess I would look for a motion to approve that sidewalk waiver?
Can I just ask?
Sure.
On this subdivision, these are residential homes that are being put there, single family homes.
Correct.
I'll make a motion that we waive the sidewalk requirement.
Motion made, second?
Second, Ed.
Amy, second? All in favor? Okay.
I'll abstain.
Abstain, okay, one abstention, okay. Okay, now, I guess...
Now you can, uh, that would be a complete application since we've taken, taken action on the waiver.
Okay, so I guess I would entertain a motion to accept the application? Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
And that is Application PB two zero two five dash zero three two Parade Road, for motion for that?
It's just a motion to accept it as complete, and then we can move forward with the discussion with the applicant.
Motion to accept.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion, a second, all in favor? I guess now we'll open it up for the applicant to present.
Good evening, would anyone like a full-size plan? I know you were... I know your questions about that. Hi, my name is Steve Maury, I'm the owner of, it was originally a five point one-two acre lot, and I am proposing to do a boundary line adjustment with the neighbor of, um, three oh four eight Parade Road, which to, which would give me the ability to create two lots, to have the frontage to create two lots. And then I'm proposing with the boundary line adjustment, a two lot subdivision. Each lot will have two hundred feet of frontage. One lot is, uh, two point one acres, the other lot would be three point two seven acres. And each lot will have its own septic system and the proposed wall radius on the lot. And I was asking for a sidewalk waiver, which I believe is now approved.
It's the existing house, it's already there.
I have more. If anyone wants to get... You want?
Go just, just put in the parcel number. Thank you.
Question, will you, right here, is this, this thing or just the?
This is his, this is the boundary line adjustment with the neighbor, this little triangle piece right here.
Okay, so it gives you enough. Right, forgive me, but can you give me some reference to, to?
Roll across the road is, yeah.
So this is, this is Miller's property, the horse farm?
Yep, 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 got it.
Okay.
Well, you just got that from?
Spanners.
Spanners, okay, yeah, great. Yep, now I know where you are.
I just can't picture that, how was that, that log cabin, is this bad? Or is this, is this, is this the one that's, they just put the garage on?
This is the electrician, Sean.
The way they just put the garage on in the last few years?
Yeah.
Okay, great, thank you, now I have an idea where we're at, thank you.
I do too, thank you, yes. Did a nice job, too.
He did, I, I didn't have anything to do with it. He's that local electrician, uh, Canelli, Sean Canelli, he's a nice, nice guy.
I guess, any questions from anybody here, anymore discussion, no?
Nope.
I guess, so at six thirty-eight, we'll open the meeting for a public hearing. Anybody to speak on this, for or against? Anybody jumping up, so I guess I'll close it at six thirty-eight nineteen? Staff report?
Yep, so first we'll go through the findings of fact. The application subdivisions, subdivision plans are complete and consistent with state and city land use regulations. The application subdivision plans were reviewed by the Technical Review Committee at its January fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five meeting. Their comments have been incorporated in the recommended conditions of approval. And at their February fourth, two thousand and twenty-five meeting, the planning board approved to continue the application to this meeting tonight. See here, and we're gonna move on to staff recommended conditions of approval. Plans must be revised and submitted to the planning department in accordance with the following. You have to correct the book and page number for parcel number five dash one five five dash one to book three six three nine, page nine seven zero. The applicant must possess all required permits and approvals granted by other municipal, state, and federal boards or agencies. All permits and approvals must be in place prior to the signing and recording of the final plans in Mylar. Should any permit or approval be revoked at any time during the project, all work must cease until a new permit or approval is obtained. Copies of all permits and approvals must be provided by the applicant to the planning department upon request. A deed must be recorded at Bellnap County Registry of Deeds conveying ten thousand six hundred and thirty-eight square feet from parcel number eight dash one five five dash five to parcel number five dash one five five dash one. Four final plan sets and a Mylar must be submitted to, reviewed, and approved by the planning department. The Mylar must, the Mylar plan must be recorded at the Bellnap County Registry of Deeds at the applicant's expense. Impact fees in the amount of three thousand eight hundred and fourteen dollars and eighty cents per new multifamily, uh, for new single-family dwelling unit must be paid to the planning department in accordance with RSA six seventy-four thirty-nine. The applicant is exempt from any changes to impact fee rates for five years from the approval date. Should the project not be completed during the exemption period, the applicant must pay any and all increases to impact fees regardless of investment status. Uh, the project and all associated conditions must be completed by no later than March fourth, two thousand and thirty. If all conditions are not met nor any extension application filed with the Laconia Planning Department by the completion date, this approval is null and void. And that is that.
So you'll change the multifamily to single family?
Yeah, the single family, yeah.
That was just a typo there, but yeah. Yeah, that's the correct number, though, for the single family.
Thank you.
Hey, I'd be looking for a motion on this application, unless we have some more discussion on it?
I'll make a motion to approve PB two zero two five dash three zero two Parade Road subdivision.
Second, Amy, okay, thank you. All in favor? Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, good luck.
Thank you.
Next up is PB two zero two five dash zero three seven eleven West Street, convert an existing barn into two apartments. Is this application complete and ready for acceptance? Look for a motion to accept this application? Don't move.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Motion carried? Uh, applicant presentation?
Hi, everyone, my name is Sam Calmerton. I own a four-unit multifamily at eleven West Street, and I'm proposing to build two additional units in an attached barn, um, on the structure.
Just one question before you get any further.
Sorry.
Got the name Sam, appreciate that, where are you from, what's, where?
I grew up in Guilford.
So, you're a Guilford resident today?
No, I'm a Massachusetts resident.
Massachusetts, okay, thanks.
Yeah. I purchased the building in two thousand and twenty-one, and I've, uh, made many improvements, but there's quite a bit more to be done. Uh, most of it relates to this attached barn structure, which needs a new roof, needs some structural improvements. Um, and I see this as, this project as a way to finance improvements that'll benefit the overall property and consequently the neighborhood. I am a Mass resident, but I grew up in, um, the area, and I've reinvested substantially all my earnings into the Lakes Region with, with, uh, real estate investments since I graduated college. Passion about, um, investing in these multifamily properties in Laconia and, um, excited about the project. I think it's pretty straightforward, but I, I'm happy to answer any questions.
I guess at this point, I'll open it up for public hearing at six forty-three. Is anybody to speak for or against this project? Any note takers, I'll close it again at six forty-three. Uh, I guess we'll look for, uh, the staff report.
So for the findings of fact, the application is complete and consist, uh, complete and consistent with state and city land use regulations. The zoning board of adjustment approved a variance for density on June twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three, and the zoning board of adjustment also granted a special exception for multifamily use on June twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three. The application and site plans were reviewed by the Technical Review Committee at its February eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five meeting. Their comments have been incorporated in the recommended conditions of approval, which are, for pre-construction requirements, all conditions in this section must be completed at least two weeks prior to commencing any work on site. The applicant must possess all required permits and approvals granted by federal, state, and municipal boards or agencies. All permits and approvals must be in place prior to the signing and recording of the final plans in Mylar. Should any permit or approval be revoked at any time during the project, all work must cease until a new permit or approval is obtained. Copies of all permits and approvals must be provided by the applicant to the planning department. The applicant must provide the Laconia Water Department with the required deposit amount for inspection services. Uh, and four final plan sets must be submitted to, reviewed, and approved by the planning department. These final plans, uh, must include a floor plan for each unit. For the construction requirements, all these conditions, uh, must be met during the construction of the project. All specifications for municipal water service required by the water, by the water department apply to all construction. A testable backflow device must be installed, the backflow device must be in a heated and accessible location, and it must be tested annually by the water department. The water department must inspect all work on water service lines. The applicant must adhere to all specifications as required by the Laconia Fire Department. A fire sprinkler system must be installed in accordance with the current New Hampshire State Fire Code and city ordinances. A separate water service line, exterior shut-off for this system is required. A fire alarm system must be installed in accordance with current New Hampshire State Fire Code and city ordinances. Uh, the sewer service must be cleaned and inspected by a CCTV. A certified inspection report must be submitted to the Department of Public Works for review and approval. Um, and the sewer service must be upgraded to a minimum of a six-inch SDR thirty-five pipe. The addresses for all units must be updated by the Department of Public Works to ensure compliance with RSA two thirty-one, colon, one thirty-three, and one thirty-three dash A. The required number of parking spaces must be delineated by paint, sign, or other method as approved by the Laconia Planning Department. Private trash service will be required if more than four trashcans or a dumpster are used. If a dumpster is used, it must be screened from view on three sides. For the post-construction requirements, all these conditions must be met prior to the stiff, prior to the issuance of any certificate of occupancy. Impact fees in the amount of three thousand four hundred and eighty-one dollars and thirty-seven cents per new dwelling unit must be paid to the planning department prior to the issuance of each certificate of occupancy. In accordance with RSA six seventy-four thirty-nine, the applicant is exempt from any changes to impact fee rates for five years from the approval date. Should the project not be completed during the exemption period, the applicant must pay any and all increases to impact fees regardless of investment status. An as-built design application and review fee for each dwelling unit must be submitted to the planning department for review and approval prior to the issuance of each certificate of occupancy. Snow storage and/or removal must be issued, must be provided by the owner so drainage structures can function properly and the required parking spaces can be utilized. Inspections of the conversion must be completed by the assessing department in order to update the property records accordingly. A construction and maintenance assessment fee of eight hundred and fifty-seven dollars must be paid to the water department. Uh, and the water department must conduct a final unit count and adjust billing units accordingly. Finally, the completion date, uh, the project and all associated conditions must be completed by no later than March fourth, two thousand and thirty. If all conditions are not met nor any extension application filed with the Laconia Planning Department by the completion date, this approval will be null and void. Those are all the conditions.
Okay, I guess I would open it up for discussion?
Hold set.
Green space is appropriate? It's all that matters.
And I guess I would look for a motion to approve or deny?
I move to approve Application PB two zero two five dash zero three seven for eleven West Street with all the conditions and approvals presented in the staff report.
Second, that motion. All in favor? Moving, carry. Thank you, good luck.
Thank you all, appreciate it.
Savannah, I think I can pull you a check. Next up is Application PB two zero two five dash zero four four for Lexington Drive to extend the completion date to June third, two thousand and twenty-eight. Is the application ready? Vote on acceptance?
Yes.
Okay, I'd look for a motion to accept this application?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Thank you, all in favor? Any others? You're up.
What's the question? Uh, yeah, I purchased the land and with the plans of building a building on it, and subsequently ended up buying a building across the street, uh, so it was like, didn't need to build. So I do have people who are interested in, uh, using the properties as tenants, and I've got one that's a prospective, but they're looking at probably six or eight months to get approval from corporate to go ahead. And one of the problems with the site is because we've got the drainage trench that runs along, uh, the edge of the road, we can't get on the property without DES permits. But since we may be changing the curb cut, I don't wanna spend the money on the permits until I know what we're doing with it, so it kind of is, keeps us from really doing anything, you know, unnecessary, because if I, I don't just, I don't wanna go back to it, so. It's gonna take me a little while to find out what they wanna do, and then, as I said, I've got interested tenants to be on it, uh, to either build or other use, and the approved use in the back is a contractor's yard is something, again, if I can get the front half to pay for part of that development cost, then we can get that opened up and make it available to, uh, people for that use. Otherwise, nothing's changed, it's not gonna change. Viant is on the downside, nothing's gonna change there, nothing's gonna change in tight flex, uh, in the same outback, so. It's really just a case of getting the right people lined up to do something with it.
Mr. Chair, quick question?
Sure.
Can you please state your name for the record?
Oh, yeah, Robert Gallagher.
Thank you.
Yeah, sorry about that.
It's all good.
Yeah.
Okay, I guess at this time, I'll open at six forty-nine, I'd open the public hearing on this. Anybody to speak for or against? Let's see any activity, so at six fifty, I'll close the public hearing, and we'll look for the staff report.
Yep, um, so for the findings of fact, uh, this application is complete and consistent with state and city land use regulations. Uh, the application was previously approved by the planning board at its June sixth, two thousand and twenty-three meeting, so he's just seeking, uh, an, an extension to May third, two thousand and twenty-eight for his previously approved site plan. And so there's only two conditions with that. Um, they're gonna amend, the first condition is to amend the prior completion date to reflect May third, two thousand and twenty-eight, uh, and then all other conditions from his original June sixth, two thousand and twenty-three approval applied.
Thank you. Any discussion? Alright, I guess I would look for a motion to approve or deny?
I move to approve Application PB two zero five dash four four with the conditions of approval as presented by the staff.
Second.
Thank you, all in favor? Did you get that, Savannah?
Alright.
Thank you.
Thanks very much, have a great night.
Okay, next up is a zoning amendment to rezone thirty-five Blueberry Lane to RA.
Yes.
We have a staff presentation?
Um, we do, sure, um. So, um, everybody knows where the Bean Conference Center is, I would presume. Um, we've had a lot of developers come in and ask about the potential of that lot, and then we've had a lot of, uh, we've had, yeah, we've had a lot of people interested in it. And it's in a residential, single-family zoning district, and its use is currently not, non-conforming. They got a exception for it back in the, years ago for the conference center. And, uh, everybody that has come in has been interested in doing what i- is typically known on Blueberry Lane, which is a multifamily use. And that lot is really more consistent with multifamily as opposed to the front, uh, the, those lots that kinda above Pearly Pond there on North Main Street where they remain to be a single family. So, um, in discussion with, um, with the city manager and, um, with legal, we decided that, you know, our, probably our best action was to, uh, think about rezoning that one parcel to RA, so it's more in line with the character of everything else going on in Blueberry Lane. Um, so we, um, here we are tonight, looking to propose just to rezone that one lot from residential, single-family to residential apartment. And we've done a, a staff report, um, it's, um, actually, i- it's a really good staff report, Tyler did it up. Um, and it does highlight, uh, the master plan in there, in that, in our two thousand and eighteen master plan, it may be very short and, and limited in its scope, but it does highlight the pro-population growth lead you strategy that we're looking to develop here in the city. And, um, and to focus on sort of the mid-market housing that we are missing in the city. And I think that rezoning this one parcel would be very much in line with that strategy. Um, I think it's in the interest of Laconia that we rezone that, so. I'm willing to take any questions anybody has for it?
Who owns the Bean Center?
Uh, I think it was, I think it was actually just sold to an LLC. Um, I don't know their name off the top of my head.
So if, if we change it, you believe they're gonna tear it down and, and build an apartment building?
I believe they have already submitted a variance application to do that.
That is an odd-shaped lot, it's, it's kinda long and narrow.
It is, it's, um, I, I think the, the lot's got some...
Challenges?
Challenges, um, and there's also a weather buffer there next to Pearly Pond that we'll have to contend with. But I think that rezoning it to residential apartment is very much in line with our master plan.
Did any of the other department heads give any input on the decision to go either way?
No.
Okay, I guess at this time, I'll open it up at six fifty-four for a public hearing. Anybody like to speak for or against this? Up to the mic. Then no takers, so six fifty-four, we'll close the public hearing. And I guess we'll, any more discussion, I guess, before we look for a motion on this? I guess then I would entertain a motion?
I hope you guys will forgive me, but I'd like to make a motion we table this to a future meeting. I'd like a little more time.
Okay. Let's look at that motion. Okay, I guess we'll take a vote on that?
Aye.
All in favor? Okay.
Of tabling, of tabling.
Tabling.
I'm not opposed, I just like more time. Okay?
Certainly.
Do we need to set a timeframe or just add to a future meeting?
Yeah, if you just wanna say, table it until the March, uh...
Should be the April first.
April first, I believe.
Bruce, does that give you enough time?
I think so, yeah.
Month is open?
Yeah, April first.
Yes, and I appreciate that, I would like to also hear others, you know, talk to some others about this. Like I said, I'm not opposed, I just would like a little more time.
Certainly.
Thanks. This'll teach me to be more careful reading beforehand, and I apologize.
Okay, next up, we have a presentation for PB two zero two five dash zero four three for seventy-seven and ninety-seven New Salem Street. It's a conceptual review of a proposed townhouse development. Is the applicant here?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Attorney Ethan Wood with Normand and Chaney and O'Neal, on behalf of the applicant in this case, K and M, and with me here is Kevin Morissette, who's, uh, the principal of that applicant. What we're proposing here is the raising of the commercial buildings that exist on these different lots and replacing them with eleven, uh, buildings, which will have four units each, two on the first floor, two on the second floor. And, uh, we have sufficient parking with more than eighty spaces so that each unit would have two, roughly two spaces. And I know that we were here previously with regard to other plans, but this seems to be more in line with, uh, the neighborhood and, uh, does meet the need for housing in this area, uh, as it'll provide forty-four units. There are a couple of places where the corners are maybe a little bit tight, where we may need to, to meet with the fire department or, uh, discuss other solutions, uh, where we don't have quite the separation between the buildings that we'd be looking to do or that they need functionally, but this is what we're proposing. And the first three that are, uh, closest to New Salem Street, these would be the three that we'd start with. So, uh, it is city water, city sewer, and, um... Any questions? They're all, by the way, two-bedroom, one-bath units.
Market rate?
My clients, the, the builder, um, the plan right now would be to have it be market rate. Um, you know, we're not proposing workforce housing, we're not proposing low-income housing. So the expectation is that they would be, uh, available for, um, anyone to rent, uh, at market rate.
Any questions from the board, discussion?
Any work so far in what the actual structures would look like?
We do, we've got, uh, the proposed, um, architectural drawings.
It's very similar to, I'm Kevin Morissette for the record. It's very similar, the unit, it's, the layout and the interior is exactly what I put on the back of Holy Trinity School. And also, at one eleven Church Street, the building out in the back is the same. Two-bedroom units.
Will they all be the same color, or are you gonna mix up?
No, I, I like red. It's been good for me.
And that, that's gonna be brick, Kevin?
You know, we, we've had very good luck with the units, I, I don't own any of those any more, but, you know, as far as renting and demand for that style.
I think so.
Yes.
Yes.
I'll build one.
Mr. Morsette, would you mind putting one of those up on the easel for us, please, that way the camera can get it? Thank you.
I have a question on the.
Yep, go ahead.
On the two buildings in the back, and it's hard to read on this diagram, but it looks like it's eleven feet between the two buildings, is that correct?
That's one of those.
Go ahead.
Uh, I, I've met with the fire department and we have their concerns, uh, already agreed upon that if there's less than twenty feet, we would fireproof the walls. So like, we would have the stud, fireproof the walls, then the siding would go right over that.
And fireproof in the way of con- uh, masonry or?
Well, it, it's a, it's a, like a drywall product, but it's made, it's made to be, go on the exterior.
And that would be between those, the two back buildings?
Right, wherever the distance is less than twenty feet, we would put that in, yep.
Yeah, 'cause you have numerous buildings that fall under less than twenty feet.
Yeah, there are a few.
Any more discussion or comments?
Landscape plan, Kevin, you put some trees in there?
Yeah, it, that would be something that we'd provide during the, uh, site plan review and the technical review committee, we'd come up with one. But generally speaking, uh, the plan is to make it look nice.
You know, and just going back to, you know, we've got, we've already designed the water, the sewer. These three buildings would be the ones that would be concentrated on first, because this has ADA accessibility. This building has a little bump out for the mailroom. And then that building's just in that section.
And where would the dumpsters be planned?
Uh, there's one dumpster right here.
I only saw one.
Yep.
How about snow plowing and storage?
Uh, we have some area here. You know, it's, it's a little tight, but we do have some areas, and if not, we haul it away, like they do in the rest of the city.
Rob, do we need to open this up for public hearing? No, okay. Okay. Any more questions, comments? We're good?
Obviously, I'm looking for an answer, I'm anxious to.
I think he's just looking for some feedback of, of.
Right, is the board amenable to the plan as, as we've discussed, so that we can put together an application? And, uh, go through the, the steps, or is this something that the board is looking and saying, mm, we don't know?
I guess, I kind of look at that and go, you're gonna make every one of those red? That's aesthetics, I understand that.
If I might add, if someone asked about snow, I would tell you there's some discussion at the council about ordinance changes, about snow removal and snow, where it goes and whatever. So you might want to include, you know, snow handling in your, in your final presentation. I think you'll find the council may well be requiring more from, from folks like, you know, or projects like this to see to it that snow doesn't get pushed out on the sidewalks or streets or whatever. Just, I'm just, I'm just offering it as, as.
No, no, it, it's helpful to hear this, um, and certainly we'll make sure that we plan accordingly with regard to that.
You know, in the parking, like, there is over eighty spaces, which I understand there's not even any regulations governing that anymore. About parking?
I'm sorry, can I repeat?
About parking per unit, you said it was changed?
Oh, um, the, the state, uh, the state did change it, so there, there are other options in there for parking. But I think the applicant's looking to use the performance zoning aspect of this.
That's correct.
Yes. But just to, uh, to discuss, uh, the snow storage. That's a, it is a review process as part of the TRC requirement that they review the snow storage with all these projects. And usually we do have that on, on larger projects like this, where we have a condition of approval in there. That stipulates that if you use up all your snow storage, you've gotta take it off-site.
And I'm only bringing it up for, for him to give some thought to as he.
Or, or if you have snow storage on-site and you've got a, you know, some X number of cubic yards of snow piled up there, where does it drain to? Is it staying on your property, or is it, is, is it going downstream to the neighbors?
Again, a, a good concern and one that we'll certainly address.
Drainage, just to, uh, Dubois and King is the engineers on it, there's less impact with this project right here than there is that existed with the existing conditions.
Kevin, initially, your, your plan was for two buildings. Those were, how, how many stories?
Three stories.
Three, both of them were three-story?
I, I think it was three and four, actually.
Three and four?
Right.
So this, these will all be two-story buildings?
Correct.
Yep. I guess that is exactly what's on the back of the school, if you went by that and just.
Except for brick.
Well, the back of the school isn't brick either, it's the, the red siding, but, um, correct.
I'm, I'm all set.
Yeah, me too.
Everybody good?
I just wanna make sure that, you know, this is our opportunity to, to get everything out there, um, that we.
Again, I just think from an aesthetics point, it'd be nice to see maybe a little variation in, in buildings, in siding, that's all. And that's aesthetics again, so.
That's something that could be easily worked out, not a problem.
Alright, yes, thank you very much.
Alright, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, yes, yep, you're up next, staff report, Land Department?
I don't know. Just listen, I guess. So, um, we've been working on, uh, possibly creating a fourth TIF district, uh, we had a meeting with, with the city manager on that, uh, this morning and, um, department heads about, um, potential impacts of a larger development up in the northern end of the city. And the benefits of, that a TIF district could bring to us, especially if we needed to expand city services or create additional municipal structures such as, uh, new public work facility or police for fire substations. So we had a discussion with, uh, the city manager on that today. We're gonna continue investigating that option, um, to possibly bring to city council in the next month or so. We'll continue to work with the developer, um, in reviewing of their plans, hopefully they'll be submitting something in the next, um, month or so. Um, and then we continue to work on our impact fee study, uh, we've been meeting with the SAU on Friday to go over, uh, all of their details. And we have submitted out, uh, submitted or sent out, um, property inventory requests to each department head, so they can inventory all their real property assets and send that back to us, so we can send that to the party contractor for our impact fee studies, so we can get a really good estimate of what we should be charging for impact fees. So, and they're coming out on, what day is it, Tyler?
They're, uh, right now they're looking at March twenty-fifth as a tentative date for them to actually come out, meet with the department heads and, and see the facilities that the city, city has.
Yep, so they'll come out and we're gonna give them a tour of the city, we'll go over all the roads and they'll get a tour of each facility, look at all of our assets and make sure that we're accounting for things the right way and our impact fee study meets the requirements of the law and, um, to make sure that we are fully utilizing everything to and, uh, accounting for everything to make our, make sure our impact fees are successful. We had a meeting with legal, um, yesterday, um, to talk about some of the ordinance changes that we had tabled and/or sent to them, and we're requesting some more information and/or review. Uh, that included changes to performance zoning, unregistered vehicles, recreational vehicles, um, and that kind of the junkyard ordinance that we have. Um, so they're looking on that, they should have that back to us.
Short-term lodging.
And short-term lodging, we also have short-term lodging for you to review tonight as well. It's the same draft that went to legal, um, so hopefully we'll be having that back by the end of next week. Um, and then we'd like to have a public, so further on that, we went to the governance and ordinance.
Subcommittee.
Subcommittee, and they wanted it brought, brought back to city council. So to bring it back to city council, we wanted to make sure we sent it back to legal for review after some changes. Have a scheduled, scheduled public hearing for next month at planning board, and then planning board would vote on it and then we would move that back to city council. So that's why you have a copy of all of that, our current ordinance and our proposed ordinance.
Rob, what's the proposed changes, just, you know, 'cause I was trying to start to try to do the side-by-side in my head when I was reading it.
So, a lot of it is language cleanup to make it more clear and concise. We wanted to outline that we didn't want it in multifamily structures, we wanted to make sure that there's a way for us to, um, figure out how many days somebody was doing short-term lodging in a specific zoning district where you needed the special exception. So we added an audit process on there where they needed to submit to us annually the number of, uh, short-term lodging rentals they had, um.
And to clarify, that's not, uh, all multifamily structures, just multifamily structures that aren't owner-occupied.
Correct.
So it won't impact condos and the weirs or anything like that.
We were afraid, uh, and we think, and we've also seen in the city of, uh, a multifamily structure or a three-unit family multistructure. Uh, the owner lives there and they are short-term lodging out the other two units. So, those units are now lost to those people who are desperately in need of them. Which is the whole purpose we created, the short-term lodging ordinance, was to preserve that housing stock in the heart of Laconia where the working people live. So, uh, that was our, our intent with that. Uh, we also had a special, special exception just for short-term lodging. Uh, we want to remove that, we think it is better in line to reference back to the master plan. So we're suggesting that we move that back to follow the special exception that we do for every other use. And.
Yeah, it was mostly just language cleanup, because if you look at the original, it, it's kind of confusing and people would come in and say, well, what do we have to do to comply with this, are we in the right zone, do we meet the right square footage or the days? It was a lot of back and forth within the ordinance, so what we tried to do is just streamline that and say, okay, upfront, these are the zones it's permitted in, these are what you need a special exception for, and these are absolutely prohibited. Um, and then from there, these are your requirements overall.
Yeah.
Regardless of what zone you're in, and then there's some smaller requirements, uh, some additional requirements, I should say, for those zones that are in the special exception. Those requirements would also go with that special exception approval before zoning board, they have to meet that criteria before zoning board could grant it. And then as Rob said too, it was to clean up that language as well, uh, to have one uniform special exception and then just those couple other things that we're gonna tack, add on to that, so you're not going back and forth in the ordinance, trying to figure out what you need to do.
There was just a lot of confusion in how the last ordinance for short-term lodging read. And we're really just making sure that it's very clear, so the, the, when it goes to the zoning board, the zoning board understands fully what they're approving and, and why they're approving a specific short-term lodging permit. So, we really wanted to make sure that was crystal clear.
Are there any updates that we would wanna make as, as a result of input from the public? In other words, this is a hot topic in every surrounding town, and obviously there are people who are renting, see it financially, the people who are living around these things see it very differently.
And I, and I think that was one of the things that we really wanted to highlight was, we're requiring them to submit an audit to us annually. Because I think that's one of the largest issues that we have is, we limit them to how many days they can do it, but we have no way of knowing how many days that they're actually renting it out. So you might have somebody in an RS district that's renting it out three hundred and sixty-five days a year and claiming that they live there, but without having proof, there, it's very hard to enforce. So this is why we're asking for that audit and they're to.
So we're not trying to move the, where's the line on, you know, are we tightening this or adding restrictions to what exists today? We're trying to just clear up our language, not make a policy change?
Correct.
And is there anybody who's come forward and said that like a policy change, is there any, you know, is there any, since the last time it was drafted, is there any news or learnings?
I think in the last year, we have only had one or two complaints on short-term lodging. I think that people are very vocal about it in other places, but nobody ever calls to actually submit a complaint.
We've had a few though.
I was saying, we've had some.
Historically, we've had a few, um, but in the, in the last year, we really.
So we're not gonna try to make any remedies based on those complaints, we're just clearing up our language, not making a policy change?
I, I'm, I'm a little concerned about, uh, and, and I don't know what you can do about this, but asking for an audit, as it were, uh, having seen a few audits that had no basis in reality, I, I worry the same thing could happen here. So I would hope you'd look for some language that gives the city the right to question, you know, go property during, you know, certain time, I, I, I'm not sure exactly what I'm talking about.
Bruce is going where I am, is that was the purpose of the audit, is that enforceable, you know, is, what's our intent behind the audit?
The idea behind having them submit to us an audit each year of how many days that they're renting was, if you are over the amount of days you're renting, we can revoke your permit.
Right. But difficult to audit.
But you've gotta rely on them to tell you how many days they rented.
It is, it is difficult, uh, you know, there's, so, question.
You should be able to utilize, like, whether you're going through Airbnb or VRBO, they should be able to print off, hey, this is how many times we've listed it and we've rented it for the past year.
Well, there's no other way for us to independently audit that.
No.
No.
And even, uh, when we've reached out to third-party contractors, if they wanted to, if we wanted to hire out somebody to look at this, they still themselves cannot get an exact number of days that something is rented out. All they can use is the big data aspect of, um, they can.
Listed in.
It's listed and based off of the pictures, we think it says property. But there's no way of getting the number of days, so unless you're out there on a very regular basis looking at a property, it's very, very difficult to enforce.
And all I'm suggesting to you is, think about some sort of language that gives the city the right to go out and inspect the properties for usage. And, and let me give you, for instance, I know a fellow who got a regular clientele, so he doesn't have to advertise anymore. And he's here like three or four months. And, uh, and he rents it out in the winter for skiing, in the spring for this, and the fall for that. And, and we have, we have no way of enforcing that or going to check and see how often people are living there. Just think, see if you can think of some way that we reserve the right to go and then, uh, you know, and, and audit the property itself from time to time, I'm not sure how to do that, but I don't mind sticking you with that problem.
I'll, um, I'll reach out to legal and see what options there are available for that.
Right.
I, I think I see what, what you're, uh, where you're, where you're going. Um, so I'll reach out to legal and see if there's, there's some options that, of how we could a- adjust that.
Please, it may not be possible, but I wish to at least look into it.
Absolutely, and, and I, I, I gave this to you with, with hopes that you'll email us or give us a call about things that you like or you dislike, or things that we should do before we go back to city council with this, um, with their request, so. Give me your input and we can bring it, and then hopefully we can have this for a public hearing at our April meeting.
Is there a database of short-term rentals listed in the city of Laconia that the average resident could go on and look at?
So we have an Excel sheet where we track everybody that submits a short-term logic permit. It is, everything we have is of course open to public inspection.
Okay.
And if somebody wanted to come in and request such data, we would provide it to them.
Okay.
Can we put a duration on these permits and have the opportunity to revo- evaluate the performance of?
They're only good for two years.
Okay.
It's the same duration that's on them now?
Yep.
And how about the duration of the rentals themselves?
It, it's less than fifteen days, that's also in here.
But would we ever consider revising that based on the feedback that I'd start to hear, we could go into it more length if we wanted to, would we ever consider revising that now when the, if this is back on the table?
So, I don't, I guess it's up to you, if you want to amend the days, I think the days are, uh, I think that comes from the state of if it's over so many days, it's no longer, you know, they're not paying rooms and meals tax then, so it's not really a short-term rental.
Right.
So if you are, are amending it to make it greater than, um, it's really not doing anything.
Well, I guess from the point of view of different angles of looking at it, it's not, but it, it can change it significantly.
I mean, uh, I guess my question is, is are you looking to regulate more of a month-to-month rental, or?
Not necessarily, it's just, yeah, the more you, and I'm not advocating any point of view right now, I'm just saying the more you make the length of a short-term rental, two weeks. I'm just saying the more you make the length of a short-term rental, two weeks or thirty days, you know, it makes it much more easy to audit. You screen out most of the problems, which, you know, if you go look at the communities who've extended the duration, the number of problems tends to get down because you don't get, you know, the weekend party group coming in just to throw the party. You know, you're at a point where someone's looking at it as, I'll rent it for two to weeks, you know, to a month. That's a different renter than someone who's in for the weekend or maybe the week. Now, if you're renting those properties, you have a point of view on that. If you are desiring to come here and rent for the weekend, obviously that impacts your decision as well.
But, but he's correct about the rooms and meals tax.
I understand that.
There's a tipping point beyond which you can't.
Right.
And I think the, the other thing that you're, is if you start changing that to make it longer, you have boarding and rooming houses that are out to a certain demographic that, that now affects them and now you might not have intended it to, and now you're classifying that as a short-term lodging. And now you're making them get a permit for, for that, or there's a lot of people that do a month-to-month. Um, and we've not historically classified that as short-term lodging. So I think it's kind of, it makes it more.
That's, I'm not trying to advocate for any particular position, I'm just saying, you know, there's some dials you can turn here to s- at least mitigate some of the problems that it sounds like, you know, these, I've seen, we've experienced in all of the surrounding towns.
And, and I think, you know, there's a lot of people that, you know, they might talk about a, a problem, but if nobody actually submits anything in writing to the planning department or to the police department, then there's no database as to support changing some of these things.
Right.
And, and I don't think we have any data that really supports that we're off from what we're doing. There's a lot of communities that are kind of mirroring what we're doing. So I don't know if we necessarily mean to make a whole bunch of change, but I think cleaning it up to make it more understandable would be beneficial.
Understandable is always better.
I know the two short-term rentals adjacent to me, um, within four houses, both sides, um, are mostly, I'm gonna say four days, five days at the most, they're all in and outs. And, you know, the big weekends, the, can be pretty rowdy. But the other option is if you knew who owns it, you could just call them up. You know, call the owner up, cause at three in the morning when the, the place is rocking and you call him up on his cell phone and complain, usually something gets done.
We, we do also provide that to each of butters to a short-term lodging property. We provide them with all the contact information and these are your steps if there's an issue to complain. Um, so we, we're pretty transparent with everything we do. But like I said, uh, take your, take your time, review it and, uh, I can make, I can make any changes you'd like, of course.
Yeah, that, that's part of the process, you know, bring it to the planning board, let you guys have your input on it and then bring it to the council and it's up to the council to decide if they have appetite for it and if they don't, they'll send it back and it's that whole back and forth game, so.
Yep, and, and the only reason we brought it back to you was because we went to the subcommittee meeting and they wanted it brought back to city council. So, um, so where we are.
Would you like the input from all of us, just so we hit your deadline?
I, I absolutely would want your input.
I'm just, is there, the timeline, when would you like it, once we hit your schedule?
Um, let's see, if I could get it by. So, if you could get it to a.
Well, if you could get it to us, cause we have to post it, so we would need it at least.
By the fourteenth, which is next Friday, that would get us to the April meeting.
We got a week.
Yeah, so that gives us time to incorporate people's changes and, and publish it online, post it in the paper and get it back to planning board. Have you had any issues with the neighbors?
Well, a couple of weekends, we, and, and to defend them, they rented it to what they thought was just a couple of people. And now all of a sudden, there's seventeen cars on the street and it, the place is rocking.
That's the issue, right.
So, yeah, we've only had a few, so I can't really complain. Yeah, you know, it's, when, they're in the hot tub at three in the morning and, you know, everybody's gotta go to work. You know, and they got the music cranked, but usually, most of the time, if you go talk to them, common sense prevails and, and things work out.
There's also nine-one-one.
Yep.
Just saying.
It's a, that's not necessarily a solution.
Well, um, we, we do need to document the complaints and if it's a noise complaint, you do have to call the police to complain.
Right.
So, I mean. There's, I mean, there, there is a process to it, so. And even we, we tell applicants or butters that you, if you have a complaint, it has to be documented. Because if not, you have frivolous complaints of, I just don't like that you're doing it.
Right.
As opposed to, uh, an actual basis for not, for denying their permit.
Right.
Alright. I guess TRC update, anything else from TRC?
No, I don't think we, um. Uh, it was just eleven West Street at the last meeting, which they were here tonight. Uh, four twenty-seven Weers Boulevard, uh, they had requested to go to the April meeting.
Okay, so you'll, you'll see them at your next planning board meeting.
Okay, and that's just a conversion from what's already there to year-round.
Yep.
Condo conversion of, uh, existing cottages.
I guess we're up for liaison reports, city council?
Nothing.
Lake's Region Planning Commission?
Nothing until, uh, actually this month, I believe.
This month, yeah, twenty-fourth, I think we have a meeting?
Yes, I believe so.
Conservation Commission? We don't have anybody on the Conservation Commission?
Nope.
Okay.
So I can give you an update if you'd like, um, they're looking to get a intern at Conservation Commission and they're also looking to do an updated natural resource inventory, uh, so that if we do an update to our master plan, they can incorporate that. And, um, they talked about adding some safety words to wetland buffers. Uh, so they're gonna do research and then they'll, they'll look to submit something to us and see what our appetite is for that, so.
Historic District Commission, Charlie's not here.
Um, so I had a meeting with legal, um, to discuss, um, we had a, a meeting last month with the Heritage Commission, um, and we also discussed it at the last subcommittee with the city council about combining the Historic District Commission and the Heritage Commission. So that's kind of, we, we had a meeting with Joe Driscoll the other day and we discussed, discussed that. Um, we're gonna, it's a lot of work to combine those two and the process to go through in order to do it. So that's probably a six to nine months, I think, before that becomes a reality. That it's, uh, it, it's quite intensive to go through all of that and to write something that works. Um, and I think that from city council direction last time, they were a little bit concerned with, um, the, the, oh, their overall purview of the Historic District Commission and that we should probably really look to evaluate what their, the scope of their powers. Um, so, well, I'm waiting to have a meeting with Charlie to review that with him. Um, and then we'll kind of look at incorporating all those changes into one. Um, but the other aspect is, is how we review demo permits and that's kind of a larger issue and then looking at that demo ordinance that we have. Um, everything right now, uh, to a certain degree goes to the Heritage Commission. That might not necessarily be the case if you were to combine the two, uh, because the only thing that they would have power over would be what was in the Historic District. Uh, but their review i- is, is much more, um, they have a lot of power when it comes to the review or to stop, um.
The Historic District.
The Historic District does, as opposed to the Heritage, which just has a review process.
More advisory.
So, um, it, it's really, what's the correct process for that? And then should you actually create a, um, demolition commission as a, as a city? Uh, there's other communities that have combined ordinances like this, such as Portsmouth. And what they did is they, instead of delegating the power to the Historic District Commission to review demolition ordinances or to review demo permits, they created a subcommittee with the power to review those. And, um, they had different boards and, uh, officials appointed that to review it, so it'd be a little bit more partial, a little bit more, uh.
Common sense?
Common sense approach, as opposed to being, some, sometimes people get very spirited in there. And I, I think it, you just need a little bit of a extra safeguard. So, there's a lot of moving parts with it and how we review all of that, so.
What are we talking about for a time limit on demolition permits? Have we changed that?
Oh, we, so, that is, uh, an- another thing we, we talked to Joe about is we've not changed it. So it is good for a year, the initial approval, um, and then they can request an extension for up to, two extensions for up to six months, months, for total of a two-year period before they need to renew it. Um, I think that the demo permit that everybody gets concerned about is the one that went there and then was tabled. And I think that it's not clear in the ordinance about how you would manage, uh, a permit that came in that was tabled. Uh, and there's nothing that says you have to make a decision within such amount of time. And that's something that we're looking with, we'll meet a group of how we would rectify that from not happening again. So, um, we've got a meeting with him, um, Joe from Code and the city manager, um, next week at some point to talk about that, I'm just waiting for dates from legal and the city manager to work out some of the time for that.
I was gonna say, I, I think that there was some confusion as well when we were looking through the ordinances and talking with legal, uh, about, uh, cause in our zoning ordinance, we mentioned the timeframe for building permits and, uh, I believe it's signed permits. And in the building code ordinance, it mentions just building permits and they only set a timeframe for that. So the, you know, it becomes a question of, well, does building permit include demo permit in this ordinance? Or all permits that come through code? So all that, you know, we're looking to not only make that clearer, but I think also, uh, make it to where it's not contradictory between both ord- both chapters as well.
A lot of that language.
It, there's, there's two ordinances and they kind of, they're referencing some of the same things. So it'd be cleaner just to have things in one, so you're only referencing back to the one ordinance, as opposed to trying to compete and go back to.
Cause one ordinance might be updated, but, well, we forgot to update the other one, so now which one applies and?
And that was the other thing that we kind of talked about was, you know, how, uh, was there a need to keep a building construction ordinance which had the demolition ordinance within it? Or could we then just adopt the New Hampshire State Building Code as part of the, a chapter in the zoning ordinance and then not have to,
Right there.
Not have to worry about it and then you just have the one ordinance. So there's a lot of moving parts with it and a lot of, there's gonna be a lot of review and a lot of discussion on that before we move forward. Which I, which I, which is why I said like six to nine months is probably pretty conservative, uh.
I know the council is concerned about the timeframe, so as long as you've straightened that out.
Yep, so I think we've got a good wrap on that and, um, we've, like I said, we've got a meeting specifically just for our current demolition ordinance with, uh, with, uh, our council and, um, city manager, uh, sometime this next week just to iron out some finer details.
I guess any other business?
Don't look at me. I'm just heading over to charge up a bill on.
And they'd have to video it when they, when he comes in to see it.
Oh, yeah.
We wanna see the look on his face. I guess, uh, at this time now, I'd look for a motion to adjourn?
Oh, yeah.
We're gonna adjourn then at seven thirty-three? Survive the first one.
Well done.
I'll be glad when Charlie's back. Can have the big seat back.